Okay. So, I'd like to call the Village of Marvin Special Meeting on June 16th at 10:05 a.m. to order. Can I get a motion to allow me to preside over the meeting until Mayor Palito gets on?
So moved.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes. Okay, so...
Uh, hang on just one second. I'd like to make a motion to allow remote participation of Mayor Pro Tem Vandenberg and Councilman Mark Elise and Mayor Joe Palito when he gets back.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you, Andy. Sorry, Joe just texted me, he needs the password.
Okay, now I got it.
You got it.
You're on.
I just hear it. Perfect. All right, I just called the meeting to order. You're allowed to participate remotely, Mayor. Can you hear?
Um, yeah, but I'm trying to get my device, my ear device works, I'm not blowing out everyone else, so. Could you use my, uh...
I like your IT support there, Joe.
Is that your IT support? No, she's gonna charge me later.
Sure.
All right.
Go ahead, sorry.
No, you're good, Joe, you can take it over. I called the meeting to order, everybody's allowed to participate remotely, so now we just need to move on with the...
Okay, well, I don't have that agenda in front of me yet.
So, the next thing y'all need to adopt, the agenda, and the only thing that's on the agenda for number three is discussion and consideration of First Tryon Financial Model.
All right, so, Joe, you got that? I can't hear you, Joe. Nope.
All right, what happened?
Nope. I'll go ahead. I need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The First Tryon Financial Model.
And I just want to take a second to introduce and recognize David Cheatwood, he's with First Tryon Advisors, he's been working with the village for a couple of months. If you guys recall, maybe about three months ago, we hired them to do some financial analysis for us in consideration of a few different capital projects that we have going on, including Village Hall. And I'll just introduce David, take it over, he can do a brief introduction on his firm and kind of what they do, and to give y'all a highlight of the analysis that they've done for the Village of Marvin.
Great. All right, thanks Christina, and good morning, everybody. Thanks for having me this morning, virtually. I've got my colleague Chazzo Hableston, Charles Hableston is on as well, his video's not popping up there, but he's on and he may chime in here as we go. Our firm, First Tryon Advisors, we're just down the road in Charlotte, we serve as a financial advisory firm to cities, towns, counties, utility systems, public, private, colleges, and universities across the Carolinas and Georgia is our footprint. I predominantly work with local governments in North and South Carolina, a little bit in Georgia as well, but we've got a wide variety of clients across the state of North Carolina, ranging from some of the bigger issuers like City of Greensboro, City of Durham, and we've got some smaller issuers as well. And that's across in the western part of the state, middle, on the coast, so we've got a really broad range of experience with different clientele and have really good knowledge with the Local Government Commission, who's the commission that approves any sort of financing by local government in the state, and a lot of knowledge and experience on the different structures and financing techniques allowed in the state. We are purely a financial advisor, we're not a bank, we're not an underwriter, we don't lend money, so we just sit on your side of the table and help you look at different options and come to a kind of good conclusion that fits the needs of the village here. While we do a ton of transactional work when it's, you know, a bond deal and installment financing in terms of helping through that process, whether it's a publicly issued bond, a private bank placement, you get credit ratings, other things, we do a lot on the capital planning side, which is what I'm here to talk to you about this morning, and so, very much upstream of the transaction, before you get to that transaction stage, let's talk about your different projects that you have on tap, not just your first one, but maybe what you also have down the road. And that was really, you know, something we'd get into more, because if we know what you have coming down the road, that can help steer us one way or another on the current decision here. And so, with the capital planning, we developed in-house what we very unoriginally call our capital planning model, that's something we'll pull up for you and walk through today. They are, it's an Excel-based model, as you'll see, it's individually tailored to each client, it's got a lot of different on/off switches, it's very dynamic, interactive, and so you can turn different projects on, turn them off, and automatically see the resulting impact on your financials. And so, we'll walk through that in detail. I wanted to start by maybe sharing with you a couple of just kind of preliminary slides on the capital planning, and then I can pull up the model itself, where I can pause and take any questions from the council members and Christina, and go through different scenarios and help you look at your different projects that you have on the horizon here. So, I'm gonna share my screen with you, give me one second, and hopefully you'll be able to see this. Can everybody see our, my screen here?
Yep.
Yes.
Thumbs up, great, great. Well, let me start again, I touched on a little bit of this, just capital planning in general, it's this tool we've developed to help give you forecast, forecast the ability to fund different projects over a near and long-term horizon, as I mentioned, very interactive. All of our models, while they're individually tailored, they have certain things in common. We have various things that we are inputting into the model first. If you have any existing debt, you all don't, but if you have any, we would put that into the model, so we know when certain debt is falling off, which would naturally create a little capacity to issue new debt. But on a going-forward basis, because I'll say this model that we've created for the village is a tool that you all can use both now and going forward, so that existing debt, any debt you issue will be kind of transitioned to the existing debt tab here. Financial performance, we started by building out your last five years of audited financial statements, we'd like to have that history in the model, so that we can go back and look at trends, how certain revenues or expenditures have been tracking, so we have your historical financials loaded up. And then we also have the ability to project out your financials based on different growth assumptions, and you'll see that level of detail here in the model, I'll have a couple screenshots here in just a second. If you have a credit rating, we can load up your credit profile, or if you wanted to potentially, or you had a need to get a credit rating in the future, the different credit rating agencies out there, your Moody's, Standard &amp; Poor's are two of the main ones, they become very transparent in how they rate a particular entity, we're able to tie into that. We don't have that in the model yet, because we don't have a credit rating, and I don't think you need one in the near term anyway, but that's a tool that we can add on down the road if the need arises. And then last but not least, we load up, whether it's a formal capital improvement plan, whether you want to call it a wish list of projects, you load up all the projects that are in consideration or under consideration over the next several years. We like to start with a very kind of all-inclusive list of all your projects, because as you'll see, we can turn things on, we can turn them off, and you can quickly and easily see what the impact is. So we drop certain things into the model, all of our models have these various inputs, the outputs we're focused on really depend on the client, the fund, or revenue source, but for you all, we're really focused on your general funds, so we're looking at tax impact there, we're also looking at fund balance impact, those are really some of the main things, fund balance in terms of a dollar amount that you may want to maintain, the minimum level of fund balance, or a percentage, unassigned fund balance as a percentage of your operating expenses. And then the revenue and expenditure performance projection, that's, as I mentioned, we load up your general fund income statement, we can project that out based on different assumptions, been working with Christina over the last couple of months to load up some certain assumptions there, all of which we have the flexibility to change, as we get in new data, new information, we can change some of those assumptions. The compliance with financial policies and targets, as I mentioned, fund balance may be something that the village wants to maintain a minimum level, dollar or percentage, well, let's load that up, and you'll see how we can track that going forward. If you had a credit rating, we go look at credit rating impact, again, we don't have that yet in this model. And then peer comparison, that's something where one of the rating agencies, Moody's, has a really good database, anybody that they rate, we can pull in their data, certain statistics, whether it's fund balance or certain debt ratios, and we can compare how you all stack up to them, and you're in a little bit of a different situation, you're a smaller entity in terms of population, not many entities your size may have a credit rating, so it may be hard to pull from Moody's certain peer comps, relevant peer comps, but in those cases, we can go in and hard code some peer comps, if you all want to, as you embark on potentially issuing some debt, how do you stack up on debt ratios versus some of your peers, we can manually load those up into this model as well to give you a comparison. So those are some of the outputs we're focused on. You will see all this in the model we pull up in a second, I just wanted to kind of take a slow walkthrough, some of the different things you'll see, but this is a snapshot from the model, this is gonna be on our main dashboard page, this is where you can load up your different projects under column two, you can put in the amount under column three, the timing of when that project need will arise under column four. Where you start to get a little functionality is the funding type, your two main ones are gonna be debt and cash. Now, within debt, you can look at things like installment financing, or if you wanted to go do a GEO referendum, in essence, debt is debt, whether it's a GEO or installment financing, so it doesn't really impact the model, but we can look at different funding structures or financing structures. But in general, y'all are gonna be looking at debt, primarily installment financing, or fund balance, same as pay-as-you-go, same as cash, those are all terms we're using interchangeably there. In terms of the funds we're looking at, you'll see when we get in the model, a couple of dropdown boxes, the general fund is the main fund we're focused on, you all also have a capital projects fund, you have a good balance in there that I think you could potentially use, or will potentially use for a new Village Hall if you end up going that route, and so we have your capital projects fund loaded up as well. In terms of debt, we can also quickly and easily look at different debt structures in terms of, is it a level principal structure? The Local Government Commission, who I mentioned earlier, who approves all financings, they like a level principal structure for this type of debt, level principal being, your first payment is gonna be your highest payment, and it declines thereafter each and every year. They like that structure, because it naturally generates a capacity for you all to fund other projects down the road, and so you'll see when we get in and look at this Village Hall specifically, we have a level principal structure turned on. We can look at different terms, you know, 10, 15, 20 years, do you defer principal during the construction period, what's the interest rate, these are different variables we can play with and kind of customize that repayment structure, and how that impacts your financials. Some of the outputs, again, we're focused on, tax impact, you all are looking at a one-cent tax increase going into fiscal '21, we've loaded that up for now, if you wanted to look at that, or solve a need for that in future years, you'll see where that's an input here and turned on, or you have the ability to input a certain tax increase, a quarter cent, a full penny, whatever it is. We've also built in something with input from, all of this input from Christina, but specifically if you wanted to look at a special tax in your tax district, we built in some functionality in that as well, under this column 13, you can turn it on or turn it off.
And David, can I interrupt real fast, just so they know what that is? That is for the Village Center District, the Municipal Service District, just so y'all are aware of what it is he's referring to. If that's a project that we decide to move forward with, we can turn on that special tax district, if that's an option that council desires to move forward with.
Under column 14 and 15, as I mentioned, we're tracking your unassigned fund balance in your general fund, and this will show you how you're projected over the next, we can put in as many years here as we have, right now this screenshot goes out to 2035, it'll tell you the unassigned balance, so if we turn certain projects on that aren't turned on, it will presumably drop this balance, but this is something that's tied to our dashboard tab and will change based on the projects we're funding. And then we can look at that unassigned fund balance as a percentage of your operating expenditures, so that is the percentage here, you all can put in certain targets, we've just put in $500,000 as a minimum, 35% as a minimum, we can make that be whatever you'd like it to be, what you'll see here, we wanted just to show you, if you put in 35%, and if there's ever a year where you drop below it, it'll red flag, it'll highlight, so it'll show you, hey, you know what, you're good for the next few years, but you'll see a dip out here, and this will potentially drop you down in a given year. So you'll see how that works, but we can change those targets or policies to whatever figures you'd like to see. And then on your capital projects fund, again, you have a good balance in there now, if you spend that, that'll obviously drop, but we can put in certain targets there if you wanted to keep a minimum in your capital projects fund. A lot of numbers, now I expect you to look at the actual numbers, this is just, again, screenshots from our model, these are detailed revenue and expenditure projections, and so we tie these into your audited financial statements historically, and then we have your fiscal 2020 estimated results, and then your fiscal '21 budgeted figures. From a projected basis, we are projecting those off of your 2021 budgeted figures, and what's not highlighted, what's not shown here, but we have cells under each of these revenue and expenditure line items, where you can look at different growth assumptions per year. Certainly for the bigger line items, your property tax revenues, some of your sales tax and other items, and on your expenditure side, you all may have different growth assumptions, or be more comfortable with certain growth assumptions in the near term, and then want to be more conservative later on, or, you know, especially over the last few months, you want to be more conservative in the near term, with some of the revenue streams potentially getting impacted, and so dial that back, and then normalize those revenue projections in future years. So when we get into the model, you'll see you have full flexibility to project out revenues and expenditures, and see how that could impact your bottom line on each of these, and we're tracking your fund balance here at the bottom as well. Capital Projects Fund works the same way, that's really just a, that's just a fund balance we're tracking there, won't spend much time. But you'll see in the model, the outputs that we're focused on, your debt service, any sort of debt we have turned on, it'll show you how much in terms of annual principal and interest you're paying per year, what that structure looks like, it'll show you on a year-to-year basis, from a fund balance perspective, are you adding to it, are you operating on surplus, do you have a deficit in a given year? If you fund certain projects, what is that net change in fund balance year to year? And then it'll show you the dollar amount and the percentage of your fund balance, both in your general fund and your capital projects fund. And then, as I mentioned, some peer comps, if we wanted to load up some other peers in there, that's where I'll take your input, if you have certain other cities or towns that you want to compare yourself to, we can load those up and look at things like fund balance, unassigned fund balance, and different debt metrics. So those are just some snapshots, I will pause there, and then I'm gonna bring up a different version, a different of the model itself, and share that with you.
I know a lot of that was probably overwhelming for some folks, we've got some new council members, but once you guys see it in actual action, I think it'll make a whole lot more sense, once you go through the model and kind of play with it some, David.
Yeah, and that's, that's a good one, Christina, I went through that quickly, and so I'm happy to pause and take any initial questions you all have on kind of what we've done, but what I have pulled up here is the model itself, and I can walk through that a little bit, and what I can do is turn things on, turn things off, and show you how it all flows through, but I guess before I do that, any questions from the council members on kind of what we've been working on here?
I think my biggest question is, I want to make sure that Christina can utilize this tool, I feel like every time we've tried to play with it, it doesn't work, so Christina, do you have the version that works?
David and I have had some conversation about that, and we actually got it cleaned up last week, and so yes, I do at this moment.
Okay. I just want to make sure, that's probably my biggest question.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Mayor Palito, I have a quick question on ratings from like Moody's and that, is that based on previous loans, or how do they formulate the ratings for us, or any, whoever's rating us, is it based on previous loans, or just where we're at financially?
So there are a variety of different factors that rating agencies take into account when rating a particular entity. It's, some are economic, the size of your tax base, your median family income levels, or your income levels in your area, some are financial-based, your fund balance is a big one, your fund and cash balance are the two primary ones they focus on, and then they look at your debt, your debt levels, how much is outstanding, and then they look at pension obligations, and then lastly, they look at management and your interaction with the state, are you very dependent on state revenues? And so there's, it's a very clear list of factors, the weighting they assign to each factor, and you all, again, you don't have a credit rating, as long as you were doing bank place financing, which I foresee you all doing, you don't need a credit rating, and so there's really, there's no reason to get one unless you wanted to go do a general obligation bond and sell it out in the public market where you had an offering document, credit ratings, et cetera. But that's something that, again, we can kind of put on the side and weave into this if we need to, but right now, you know, you don't have one, but there are factors, if you're interested in seeing what those factors were, we can certainly share those with you.
And the advantages and disadvantages of deferring principle, you mentioned during construction, is there any advantage or disadvantage to that?
There, the only advantage, well, first, in terms of the interaction with Local Government Commission, you know, they're not gonna let you just go wild and defer principal for years, in many cases, they'll let you defer principal for a year during the construction period, and so, for a revenue-producing project, that may make sense, I'll use a parking deck as an example, if you're waiting for parking revenues to really help you repay that debt, you may want to defer your principal until the deck is completed, it's open, and you're receiving revenues. You know, for something like your Villatoll, that's not a revenue-producing project, and so you're not necessarily dependent on those revenues coming in to pay it. That said, if you wanted to stare, if it required a tax increase, and you wanted to kind of stair-step or ease into that tax increase, or defer that tax increase for another year, there's, there may be some reasons to defer that principal, another reason could be if you have existing debt, and it was rolling, you know, your project was ready to go now, you wanted to finance it now, but you had debt that was, existing debt that was rolling off a year from now, well then, you may want to defer principal for a year to get over that hump, to make it more palatable to bring that new debt into play. Again, right now, looking at your current setup, I don't see a reason to defer a principal if you're looking at a tax increase now, you don't have existing debt rolling off, it's not a revenue-producing project, I wouldn't say you would need it, I just mentioned it as something if you wanted to look at that, you have some flexibility there to do so.
Bob, did you have something?
Well, I just had two questions, kind of in line of what Councilman Vandenberg was saying about, Christina, this is something you would be doing, right? This is something that's hands-on pretty much for you, does it marry easily into the already well-organized budget that we look at, does this marry into it, so what in fact this very page we're looking at right now, does it feed, just leave it in properly, into our existing budget the way it's laid out?
It does, but as David mentioned, this is really just a snapshot in a day and time as it is right now, so it would need to be updated pretty frequently, as budgets, you know, we move forward in budgets and they change, but as it stands right now, yes, he's looked at our audited financial statements for the last, I don't know, five years or so, and put those numbers in, as you can see here, and projected out what those, you know, those revenues and expenditures should be for the rest of the 2027, is that right? So for the next several years?
Yeah, you know, and actually, it goes out really to infinity here, we want it, you know, at some point, projections start to lose their value, but I'd say with the next, you know, we tend to focus five to 10 years projections, but yeah, we've got those going out, and I would say, you know, to help with that, when we look at this model, it's absolutely designed to be, I've been working with Christina in doing this, and she's familiar with these models and can absolutely run them, we're always available to run them as well at different scenarios. You know, the reason we tie them into your audit is because at a minimum, we're touching this kind of each year in terms of, your fiscal 2020 year closes, you've got your audit done, well, let's go in and drop in those actuals for fiscal 2020. If you're, you know, we're halfway through 2021, and your budgeted results are looking different, or your year-to-date results are looking different than budgeted, well, then we can go in and update those as well. If we have something like what's happened over the last several months, and we want to dial back some projections on revenues, then we can go do that, so it's got the flexibility to go in and change those in kind of real time here if we wanted to, but we tie them into your audit, just so each and every year, at a minimum, we're going back and dropping in the final results, so we have one more year to have it in there.
The real, to answer your question a little bit more in detail, Councilmember Mark Elise, is it's really based on us to try to make some decisions today with a snapshot that we see today for the capital projects over the next five years, assuming the things that we have assumed in the model, assuming, you know, growth factors stopping at one, you know, certain point, because our landmass has developed out, so we have those types of assumptions in there, and assuming that all of the services that we have existing today remain the same. So as we change things, or as we may have additional revenues come in, i.e. the Municipal Service District, the Village Center District, we can turn those on, so that y'all can make some decisions of those projects as you see on your screen, so that, you know, we as staff know how to move forward with those projects. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
And one, someone else need to chime in? One other question, just kind of off the cuff, a couple of years back, we were told that the shutdown may affect us financially, that happened back in 2017 for just a week, do you see any or foresee any concerns or problems with that?
I'll jump in here, David, real fast, because we, at a staff level in terms of our budgeting, we're very conservative with our revenues, so we are hoping that our conservativeness has kind of absorbed some of what we will see in the future, if, you know, if anything shall happen as far as sales tax revenues are concerned, so I feel pretty confident that the model reflects pretty accurately based on our conservative trends at a staff level.
No, not that, when we had to shut down the government for a week, and the league said that we wouldn't be able to get financing, that's what Joe's...
Oh, okay, okay. No, David and I have had a conversation about this, and we've also had a conversation with the LGC, we did, David, I'm sure you recall the conversation that we had in terms of our budget not being approved, maybe two years ago, and we were scared that the LGC wouldn't approve installment financing. We've had a conversation with the LGC since then, and they said, as long as you are clear on your budget this year, you haven't had any problems, you've reconciled it, we feel pretty confident that you will be able to achieve approval from us.
Great, well, I can, I can jump back in here, and again, this model that hopefully everybody can see is pulled back up, and this is the Excel-based model of screenshots we're looking at, I'll blow this up, but please let me know if you need me to make it bigger here, but these are the different projects, in talking with Christina, that you all are considering funding here, again, these are not, may not be formal CIP, these are maybe all the different projects that are out there, but what you'll see is that we can turn projects on, we can turn them off, if I turn it off, it'll gray out, and that means it's not flowing through the model, it's not affecting the financials, conversely, if I turn it back on, it's in white, it is now going through the model and flowing through that, and so you'll see how that works. But all these different amounts of projects, we can change the amount here, we can change the timing, as I noted, in terms of the funding types, again, a GEO bond, you have debt, which could be a GEO bond, there are particular types of revenue bonds, but primarily, y'all are looking at either GEO or installment financing, are your two primary sources of funding, or fund balance, same as pay-as-you-go, cash, using those interchangeably, you have the dropdown of the two different funds, so if you have some extra funds in your capital projects fund you wanted to utilize, you would simply change that, so for instance, on this Village Hall project, we have a certain amount being funded out of your capital projects fund, and I'll show you how that flows through. You have your level principal structure, if there was something that you were able to do level debt service, things that you can do level debt service if you're doing, you know, vehicle or equipment financing that actually doesn't require LGC approval in most cases, and so you can do level debt service there, and so if you have those sorts of things loaded up, you can potentially do level debt service, but term, interest rate, et cetera. Here are our different charts we're focused on here, and so I'm gonna start, you'll see there's, they're all loaded up, we can look at your general fund, I'm gonna start with your general fund, you'll see a dropdown for each of these fund balance columns. So this is your current general fund projection in terms of change in fund balance, this is your total general fund unassigned fund balance, what that is as a percentage of expenditures is the orange line, any sort of target that we put in will show up in here as well, so that's general fund, we can also look at your fund balance, if we do the dropdown menu into your capital projects fund, you'll see a big drop from '20 to '21, and that's because we have $860,000 being funded out of your capital projects fund for the Village Hall project in 2021. In terms of debt service, this chart up here, we bring it up to the top, we calculate in the back, the way we build these models, we kind of build them back to front, so that once we get all the data in the back correct, we're really focused on the front page, the different charts, the graphs... charts, the graphics, easier to see versus going into all the different numbers back there. We can always go back into the numbers if we wanted to, but we tend to find the chart the easiest to look at the results here. But this is what your debt service would be, $90,000 going down each and every year with that level principal structure, if you borrowed pursuant to these terms. If you borrowed $940,000 over a 15-year period, level principal at 3%. Now, if I went and changed that from a 15-year term to a 10-year term, I would go now and see that this is now changed automatically. Now, our first year's payment is $122,000, and our final payment is out in 2031. Instead of $9,400,000, what if that's $1,200,000? We can scroll back down and see how that is now, it may have caught your eye, that changed briefly, now this is automatically changing. And so if you can kind of imagine the scenario where we're on a meeting like this, and we may get into this today, but looking at that project and your different options out there, because I know you'll have the different, several different options that you're considering for your, for your village hall, we can plug those in, different amounts, different amortization terms, see what that does in terms of your total debt service, as well as your fund balance. And so the fund balance, as you saw from the screenshots, we're looking out here and seeing, tracking what your fund balance is on a projected basis. If it read flags in a given year, that mean, it means it fell below any sort of target we put in, that 500,000 is just from us as a starting point, we can make that be whatever it would be. But if, watch this catch your eye, if I go back to a 15-year term, that's going to change, before I present her, that'll change these numbers over here. So that's going to flow through. So that 15-year term, you're not paying as much over 10 years, you're spreading that out over 15 years, therefore, has less of an impact on your unassigned fund balance. You'll pay more interest over time, but your annual impact is less. If I then change that back from the $1,020,000 to, I think that was $940,000, I think that's what it was before, that'll go and change your unassigned fund balance as well. And so it's all linked together. If you all wanted to look at different tax increases in a given year, you, you all may say, you know what, I really want my fund balance to be $750,000 every year. What it would take, what would it take, actually, let's see, what would it take to be $800,000 in a given year? Well, that's falling, projected to fall below that out in 2028, just barely, but I'm just, for illustrative purposes, showing you how this would work. You could go in and say, you know what, let's put in a quarter cent increase there. You drop that in. We have the value of the penny being calculated in the income statement, but just for ease of illustration, we've got everything on this main page here. So if you did a quarter cent increase, that would then keep you over any sort of minimum target. So these are all things you can play around with, different targets, different ratios, different tax impacts, projects, et cetera. And that's really what we're focused on here.
So David, if I can, if I can interrupt for just one second, because I want to make sure everyone's on the same page and understanding, you, you've got some high-level numbers here and conversations. A lot of the main points when council is deciding to make decisions on projects, whether it's village hall or other capital improvement projects, is obviously the cost of, of, you know, that project and what it's going to be absorbed in that operating budget, and if we could do that without a tax increase. In the same factor, the percentage of fund balance is also a major consideration, and that's not something that our council has yet decided as, as far as, you know, where do they want their, their targeted principal, or their targeted fund balance to be. So we don't know what that number is in terms of what we're allowed to use from our fund balance, but I think your assumption of 35% is, is pretty conservative. You know, they may, they may want to see that increase just slightly, and that's a conversation that we can have with our board and, and make those projections. But just in terms of the debt service that's associated with village hall, for instance, assuming the other projects go along as they're planned, do you have somewhere that shows the actual, can you scroll down and, and show me the actual dollar amount of what those payments would be? I think you said $90,000 with those assumptions?
Yeah, and so with that, this is it from a chart, I can go back in if you wanted to look at the actual numbers, those, the debt service would show up, bear with me one second here.
I think it was 90 at a 10-year amortization, if I remember correctly?
Yeah, it was, it was. It was 90, 91,000 in the first year, and it declines slightly thereafter, each and every year with that level principal structure.
Gotcha. So the, the first
So your debt service, this is your actually, your dollar, your numbers for $940,000 level principal over 15 years at a 3% interest rate, those are the actual dollar numbers if you wanted to see that there.
Okay. So for, for purposes of discussion, do you think that it's, the first initial step is for council to make some type of decisions on what they feel comfortable with fund balance-wise?
Yes, that, that's the main driver of all this, because you all may say, you know what, I'm, I'm comfortable with a lower fund balance. Well, that would tell me, well, you can do a little bit more with cash and less with debt. You may say, well, no, interest rates are incredibly low, I also want to keep more cash on hand, some of the uncertainty that's out there, let's, let's finance more. So it's got, you know, less of an annual upfront impact, more spread that out over time, and let's go with a higher fund balance. So that fund balance amount is really your main target in, in all of this analysis going forward. And so that's where there's not a hard line, it's got to be this, it is a council decision. You know, there are certain minimums that we would tell you, you really don't want it to go below X or, but a lot of it is just the general comfort level for the council as to where they want to be currently and where they want to be going forward. In a lot of these cases, it may project that you dip slightly below it in a given year, you all may say, let's, you know, it's fine, we got a lot of projections, assumptions in there, let's play that out, and if we need to adjust some projects in two or three years, we can do that. But this at least gives you a good picture of kind of how it will look going forward. And we can also look at different kind of sensitivity analyses with revenue and expenditure assumptions, and how that can affect fund balance as well. But yes, Christina, that's the first kind of point, is what's the, what's the target, minimum target level you'd like to see?
Okay, and just for clarity's sake, just so council understands, y'all have not yet adopted any type of policy that says you want to stay at a certain level. You've got some guidelines, and, and obviously, as David mentioned, they would, they would issue some guidelines. The LGC does not have a hard stop deadline, it's just a 8% is their recommendation. That's not something that, you know, staff or First Tryon would ever recommend us getting remotely close to, because we more than likely get some warning letters. But as it stands right now, I think we're about 80 or 90%. If you could pull the chart analysis up for the, the peer charts? What is our percentage now?
So in terms of unassigned fund balance, you're at 47%.
Okay. And so there's different, there's different types?
Based on, sorry, based on 2019. Now, if I, you'll see some numbers up here, I can go to 2020, your estimated, and it's about the same. But yeah, so you're, you're in that 40, close to 50% range.
In the unassigned. And so our peers, Fairview's at 172%?
Yeah, and that's where with sometimes the smaller peers, that can get skewed a bit if they've got, you know, in the year with a good fund balance, but they have relatively low expenditures. These are just some of the peers that are out there. It's not meant to be a determinative list here, but if we wanted to look at other ones, I mean, I would say in the general view, we're working with the town of Aberdeen, which is population-wise. What is your, what is your population, Christina?
7,000ish.
What is the population?
7,000ish, but our budget is, is, you know, much smaller in comparison to that population.
Right. And so, you know, if you ask me what a good target, I mean, honestly, 35% is a good target. You, with some of the smaller entities, you may see a slightly higher balance, just because, again, with the, the expenditures, smaller budget, sometimes that number gets skewed a little bit higher. I would tell you, you really don't want to go below about 25, 20 or 25%, you probably will start hearing from the LGC that, hey, you're falling below some of your peers out there. The local government commission also has, one of the things they look at is your peer group by population and area of the state, so they've got a, a good tool on their website, and we can pull in some of those peers as well, if you like. But I'd say, you know, roughly that 35 to 50% is a good, is a good number. Obviously, the higher it is, the more flexibility you have.
So that, that'll be a conversation that we follow up with our board to, to make some decisions on, but let's just, for today's illustration and today's purposes, let's just assume a 40% fund balance percentage, just so we can kind of move forward on what those assumptions mean for certain projects.
Okay. And that percentage, we put in a dollar amount here as well. The percentage, I mean, that dollar amount is, as your expenditures grow, that dollar amount needs to grow as well. And so I would say focus probably more on this one, not so much on a minimum dollar amount. We have that in there. Another entity wanted to look at it both ways, but maybe we'll focus kind of more on the 40%. With your expenditures at roughly, you know, roughly $1 million, I mean, that's, that's about a $400,000 unassigned fund balance there. So you're
So on this screen that you have here, number one is the village hall project at 15-year term, principal at 3%. On that committed fund balance, back over to the right, the red area? Is that the 170,000? That's, I'm sorry, no, 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 no. That's capital?
This is your capital projects fund. And so your capital projects fund has a little over $1 million in it. Right now, we have you funding $860,000, using $860,000 of that $1 million balance
Yeah, go
To go towards that project.
Can you change that?
It's why that's dropped.
Can you change that to, to fund balance, not capital fund? Go, go over.
Sure. And so if I change that to general fund fund balance, you're going to see two things happen. One, this has now stayed the same, but now, two, this has dropped, because now we're using that amount out of your fund balances, so that is dropping that balance. This is, again, unassigned fund balance here.
Okay. Gotcha.
And so that's, again, kind of some of the back and forth to figure out the right, the right mix there.
So what we would need to do, what we would need to do is to avoid the, the red area for the targeted fund balance is to put in some tax increases over there.
Right, but were you planning on that 860? That was coming out of the
It is.
Capital projects.
It is, yeah, but whatever is not absorbed moving forward, we're going to have to, we're going to have to absorb that in the fund balance. So the, the capital, the capital funds needs to be expended first, and then whatever, you know, whatever would remain moving forward as far as installment purchasing, we'd have to absorb that in the, in the, either the fund balance or the operating budget. I, I think it's the same for purposes of your model.
That's right, that's right. And so if you looked at this and said, you know what, I'll have 170,000, well, let me, if you wanted to fully expend that capital projects fund, you could certainly do that, and just go, you know, dial this up to $1,030,000, and then you dial this one back to 770,000. I think those are the right two numbers. And that, we now are down to, we, we fully extended the capital projects fund, and we've lessened the amount we borrowed, so that has changed. Now, instead of 90,000, we're at 74,000. So
But go, go back up to, so that council can see the, the fund balance, go over, to the right. So here, you see in the general fund tab, columns S through W, we're still within the targeted fund balance. Like, there's, there's no need for a tax increase because we're still in that targeted fund balance percentage, we're just pulling from it each year.
And, and what we look for, because this also includes, you know, not just this project, that's clearly the biggest out there, but you have a variety of other projects over the next three, four years, different dollar amounts. You know, right now, these are the only ones that are turned on. These are loaded up, we have not turned them on yet, but we can, and this will allow you to say, well, can we fund these projects at a fund balance, still maintain our target? Just note that we've got these projects loaded out because they're out there, but we don't have them turned, we don't have them designated as a funding source yet, or designated a funding source, so they're not flowing through just yet.
This is a, keep what it plans squeeze the balloon up.
Yeah, yes. But it's a good tool so that, that council can make some decisions on village hall based on these assumptions with all the other future projects at play as well. You know, there may be some that we have to pull from the card if, if we're not willing to go up on taxes and we're willing to, you know, use appropriated fund balance, but we've got to play with those numbers and figure out what, what it is that council, you know, wants to see done, and what it is they want to see as their targeted fund balance percentage, and tax increases if they're needed to get some of these things done.
Well, but I, I think if you go to, if you go to your percentage, if we just agree to
Yeah.
Where our percentage is, and then we plug in what we're doing, then, even as you, even as you go into future years, when other projects come on board, that's when we say, okay, this is where we add in the tax increase. So it's just, it's making it easy, the tool makes it easy, as long as we commit to the percentages.
Right.
Then we just manipulate, in real life, what we need, you know, how we need to go about structuring it. What, what means do we use to get there?
It makes it really clear as to what, where you can go, where you can't go, and where you have to pull to, to readjust to make it all work if you start with that, that fund balance percentage.
This is, this is a way to, for us to be transparent and say, why did you do a tax increase? Was it by emotion, or based on emotion, or is it based on, you know, what the projects, the community has said that they want to do? Well, we're going to do one in 2027 because that's when we're doing this project. And it's, it's not by,
Yeah, it's not
You know, it's not by emotion going, you know, let's, I haven't had one in a little while, let's just go and do one.
Right.
It's based on
Facts of figures, they're very
Right.
Publicly.
Available and projected, exactly. So it's, it's not just throw it in there, it's that you've got your projections over the years that the public can see, and then if they want a specific project to be added in there, they can understand why those funds have to be acquired somewhere, if it requires a tax increase or whatever, to get to that at that juncture. I like it, it's a great tool.
So we can continue to play with some numbers if, if council desires to do so, or if y'all want to have a conversation, you know, at, at another meeting, a work session, where we kind of play with this tool a little bit, turn on, on and off things. But, you know, the, the first step is obviously obtaining that percentage goal that y'all wish to achieve over the next several years. And that can kind of lead the discussions on what projects, and, and what that means in terms of if we're going to do installment finance purchasing, what years, that sort of thing. And if, if that's something council decides to do, First Tryon is, is able to kind of help us in that process of obtaining financing if we need it. Not, not a very hard task, but they have been successful in getting some very good interest rates, so they could hold our hand during that process. Our contract with them expires the end of this month, and if this is something that we want to continue to modify and, and move forward with in terms of getting additional audited financial statements, like the one that we're getting ready to close out, we'd want to secure them too, moving forward in terms of getting those numbers updated pretty frequently, annually that is. Do y'all wish to continue discussion on playing with numbers, or would you like for us to come back at a, a work session, just at, at a staff level and talk about the targeted fund balance and play with numbers? It's really, y'all, what, kind of what we do next in, in terms of this meeting?
I'd like to do it at the work session.
I, I would like to do it in a work session too. However, what I would ask is for them to provide recommended, recommendations, where we can go and give us the window recommendations. He said 35 to 50%. So we can go in there and say, okay, if you're 35, 50%, let us manipulate the tool and say, okay, if we're, if we're comfortable, we may say, we may get 42 as optimal, that we can, we feel comfortable with 42%. It's within the range, but that's where we can then go set the guidelines.
So you want to
So I would, I would recommend doing a work, work session, but have the guidelines where we can go into the tool and manipulate the numbers.
So you want a fund balance recommended, percentage recommendation from them? Okay. You hear that, David?
Yeah.
Okay. You can just shoot me an email on that, based on some analytical work that you can do on peers and, and that sort of thing.
Sure.
And I agree, I, I agree, we need to discuss that in the next work session, or, you know, those are some of the work sessions.
Yep, I, I 100% agree on it. I, I, but like Jamie, I'd like to have a little more information so that we know, you know, it's great to discuss it, but if we don't have a basis to discuss, then it's harder to just pick a number out of thin air.
The other question I would have, or the one, the other input maybe he could provide for us, are as we start to look at, you know, the installment finance, the, the different ways to, to finance, and just some ideas around that. I know we've talked about some, you know, bonds, and we've talked about other types of things. Just to give us something to, as kind of a roadmap, without, so without us trying to recreate the wheel, we've got some, you know, we've kind of got some pedals down there to
Okay.
To find our way through it.
I think that's pretty simple, David. I mean, I, I think your recommendation's going to be installment finance. I mean, I think your recommendation is going to be installment financing based on just kind of where we're at, and we can have a conversation about that, but that's what I would assume you would say.
Yeah. You, you're right. I mentioned this briefly when we're going, you really have two options for financing this sort of project, a general obligation bond and an installment financing. The general obligation bond requires voter referendum. In many cases, you don't see it for like a city hall or a village hall or something like that, but those are your two. The installment financing is a very tried and true method in North Carolina. Everybody uses that very commonly accepted tool. So I would say that would be the one to go on this one. And just to keep in the back of your head, because maybe y'all have done it in financing like this in maybe ever, at least a long while, but the Local Government Commission, you know, they approve each deal, they meet once a month to approve certain deals. In order to get on their agenda, you have to send in an application. One of the key things in the application is the actual construction bid. If you're all going to bid this out and they want to see the, that bid tabulation, if you're using a construction manager at risk, they want to see that guaranteed maximum price contract. So that is really, when you talk about timing, when can I go and do my financing, it's when you have the cost certainty of the project is when the LGC will let you do that financing and not before. Just to kind of keep that in the back of your head from a timing standpoint, because a lot of entities will say, hey, rates are good, let's go ahead and lock in our financing now. While that does make sense in a lot of cases, in North Carolina, you can't do that until you have your project cost certainty.
Hey, real quick question on that, because that kind of affects, you know, your notice to proceed with the vendors in terms of the bidding. I know they have to maintain a price for a certain number of months per the, the contract and the bid, but like, you know, I don't know, let's just say our price maintenance was three months when the bid was submitted. Can you use previous?
Yeah, you wrap, you wrap it all in together, and so we would put a financing calendar together for you that would show the different, you know, village council actions that are necessary. There's two, two main actions, two resolutions and a public hearing that the council has to hold and adopt. And we weave that in, if you do a bank RFP, we send that out in the, you know, several weeks ahead of when you want them back. So we line it all up so that you get your bank bids back around the same time you're firming up your cost for the project. And you do that ideally the first part of a month where you can get LGC approval the next month. And once you have LGC approval and your council action's done, you can close on it. And so when you get that in, if it's good for 60 or 90 days, we are doing the calendar so that you can close within that window.
So in terms of the, the actual dollar amount of the project to determine the LGC approval, can you use a previously submitted bid or does it have to be a live active bid today?
It would have to, it would have to be a bid that's good for, yeah, I mean, if, it would have to be a live active bid, that's currently good, not one that has expired.
Okay, sounds good. That, that does, that does impact a lot in terms of the, the schedule, for sure.
David, another question, just some, some basic, as you're, you're talking right now, some basic questions. First off, do you give recommendations of different lenders that we could use?
Yeah, you know, what we typically do in this process is we send it out, we have a long list of local, regional, national banks that, that lend money to folks like you. And so some of those are the banks you've heard of, the ones that are on the street. Others are ones that you may not have heard of, that are just interested in, they've got a bucket of money to lend and they're interested in lending. And so we maintain that, a database of those banks that admittedly, especially in this environment, the banks that are willing to lend, how long they're willing to go, that is changing pretty frequently. Some banks will kind of pull it back.
That was my next question. I was going to ask, you know, for example, I'm just curious, how far can you go out? Can you go out 30 years and then try to maybe accelerate the loan by normally, you know, paying down extra payments or a principal? Just wondering.
Yeah, and good question. So there's two ways to look at that. First is the Local Government Commission. For a project like this, they won't let you go longer than 20 years. That is their policy, is 20 years is the max that you can go there. And so that's on the one hand. Now, from a bank perspective, this, given the size of this, you all want to go the bank route as opposed to doing a public issue with a credit rating. There's a lot more work involved in that, and for this size, that, that, that's not worth going that way. But from a bank perspective, more banks, the, most banks are interested in lending a little bit shorter, 10 years and in. We do have several banks that will go 15 years. There are a very small handful of banks that will go 20 years. But when we send out a proposal like this, we normally, if y'all are interested in potentially looking at 20-year options, 15-year, 10-year, the beauty of the, the bank RFP route is you can put out different options and say, hey, bank, can you bid on a 10-year, a 15-year, a 20-year? Let's see what comes in and then make your decision from there. You all may be set on, hey, let's go 20 years, but maybe you get in a really aggressive 15-year rate, you look at it and say, you know what, let's go that route. So we, we tend to put in a couple of different options for banks to bid on, let that information come in and then make the decision from there. But at the, at the long end, you're looking at going 20 years. But that bank market is in a little bit of a state of flux right now. You know, I think by the time y'all are ready, hopefully, things have, have normalized and banks are, are back to lending normally. The ones that are lending, you know, the rates are still very attractive. But those are some of the things we're looking at, just kind of different banks, how long they'll go. And that's just honestly just knowledge we have from bidding. You know, we bid out probably two or three of these a week, so we have a lot of good market intel in there.
And, and see, you're segueing into my next one, so thank you, but I was going to ask you about the interest rate. You know, you use an example here of 3%, and, and I'm looking here at your recommendation, I guess that's up there, of 40% on the UFB. And then I'm thinking, what happens a year from now? What happens two years from now? Does that change? In other words, if we all were to get together with the council, let's just come up with a number, whatever it might be, does that adjust or change a year down the road, two years, when we're really ready to finance? Does, does the interest rate change all that? Is it related in some way?
Yeah, you know, each time we're touching this model or getting together with y'all or Christina's updating it for you, we'll take another look at that rate. And so that'll change. We tend to be kind of zero in on the rate when, when that project's near term. If you were looking at a project that was out three or four years and potentially financing it, you would see a higher interest rate assumption there because it's just further out. We don't know what the rates environment's going to be. Right now, that 3% rate has some cushion in it. I think if you did 15 years, you'd be in that 2.5% range. And so you've got a little bit of cushion in there, but if we saw that materially change the next time we were looking at this or running scenarios, we would adjust it. And so if this is a project that's going to come to fruition next year, you know, each time we're looking at it, we can, we can change that. But I'd say, you know, and certainly over the last many years, 15-year term, 3% has been, you know, a pretty good, pretty good assumption there, but that's something we can continue to update.
But Councilmember Marklees, the unassigned fund balance, the 40%, that has nothing to do with the, the percentage of the, the rate. Those are two independent rates, like they have nothing to do with one another. The fund balance, the fund balance percentage is just something that Cancel decides as a policy, how much money they want to see in the bank account every year. Just, you know, we always want to have 500,000 in the bank account. That's, that's what that unassigned fund balance represents, just whatever target Cancel desires to see.
Gotcha, thank you.
And that, to Christina's point, that can be an informal target. You can formalize that by adopting a resolution or something, but again, each, each entity has a different path. And in a lot of cases, it's an informal target and you can, you know, down the road, if you wanted to bump that up, you wanted to lower it to fund a project, you can do that. But, yeah, that can be formal or informal.
Do we have one today?
Would you not?
Not even a recommended?
No. Y'all have some guidelines in your policy, and I, I didn't see an actual percentage. I just saw 8%, which is not anywhere we would get remotely close to.
So that's, I think, I think once we, we need to make a note that once we do agree upon what its percentage is, that we put it in as, at least as a, at least have as a strong recommendation or recommendation, that it's at least 35% or, you know, whatever the case may be. So that's a marker that future councils, we kind of put the marker in place for them.
Looking at, we have a financial policy for fund balance, fund balance policy that was established in 2012. To my knowledge, it has not been updated. We can bring this before Cancel at one of the work sessions, and y'all can look at making a targeted fund balance, and then we can update the model and have some additional conversation about what projects and, and what types of installment purchasing or use of fund balance we want to, we want to see with these projects.
Good. Sounds like a good idea.
David, for purposes of moving forward in the discussion with Cancel, can you actually put in those capital projects that are in rows 20 and down? Can you put them in the model with a general fund assumption? So that we can actually look at it together? And then those village, center, district, that needs to have that overlay district as the funding type. Somehow that needs to tie together.
Uh, which one was, oh, this one is tied to.
It needs to be tied to that overlay.
Turned on.
Yeah. They need to be independent, because the, the goal would be for that, that municipal service district tax to fund, fully fund that portion.
Okay, that, that's a good, actually, now that you say that, Christina, I may then, I may want to carve that out into a separate tab just so I can track that one individually. Because right now, it's set up where it's flowing into your general fund, which I know it would, in terms of your audited financials. I may, though, for purposes of illustration here, and to kind of track that, I may put that into a separate fund.
Okay.
Those revenues doing that. So I can do that, it's an easy change, we can do it after, after we talk. But let me, if I, do you want to see this now, Christina, or are you telling me for the next?
No, for, for purposes of us to, for purposes of our staff conversation with Cancel, our meeting that we have independently with them. You don't have to do it now.
Okay. And this is really just to, again, highlight how it works. If you, if you turned all these projects on, it's 395,000 of projects over the next several years, all at a fund balance, your general fund fund balance, what you'll see here is, you know, now you start to see a little bit more red flags. You're still pretty good from a percentage, but at 40 is your target, you can't quite fund all those. And so, again, that may, you know, steer you in a different direction. But all these kind of things to come, again, as Christina said, one of the main things here is to introduce this tool to the council members, and we can look at as many different scenarios, and you can envision when we're in, you're in a work session scenario, turn things on, turn them off, and kind of come to a, an agreement on the best, best path forward.
Hey, David, can you just do me a quick favor just for, as we're playing around? Can you go to line, it looks like 15 or 16, my eyes aren't that good, but line 15 or 16, just go back over to and put in a tax increase, put a one cent tax increase, where they're, go one, go down one in 2024. I mean, you, you see there how your percentage is then, I mean, a one cent tax increase takes your, takes us out of the red zone, and you're really not, you know, so if red flags you, yes, but based on the percentage, you just do, okay, we do a one cent, one cent tax increase in 20, 2024, and then it pulls us out for the remainder to 2040.
So what he's saying is basically if we go up one cent in 2024, we're still able to accomplish all of the projects that are listed there.
Yeah, without getting in that deep into the.
So my point being, when the public says, well, why did you give us another 1% tax? Well, you said you wanted all of these other projects done, and based on the percentages that we've set, well, we, and we can move the percentage to 35. If you move that percentage to 35 and still keep the 1% tax increase, I mean.
Yeah, you're not even close to it.
Right. So it's just, again, it's a, it's a cute game, squeeze the balloon, but it allows us the opportunity to be transparent as to, more transparent as to why.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you, David.
Yeah, thank y'all. Again, very nice to see you out here this morning. I'll send this, Christina, I'll make a couple of those little changes, I'll send it back to you, and then we can, I'll send you some information related to fund balance percentage and some of those kind of peer comparisons that, there, and then just wait here from you on other scenarios, and happy to participate in any sort of work session or anything if you'd like us to.
Sounds great.
Thanks so much, David. Appreciate your insight.
Everybody.
Thank you, everybody, staff and David and Charles, thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you, have a good day.
You too, thanks.
I don't know, I always feel like I need to wave.
We never, we had an official meeting, we never officially adjourned.
Oh, you didn't adjourn it.
We can, I guess.
Well, you can, you can get them back on by telephone.
Well, let's, I'll have my phone.
Can we just ask?
Just get one of them. I mean, that's all we need.
You just need one. Joe, come back for a second?
I mean, do you want me to call Kim while he calls Joe?
Okay.
Should I call Bob?
I mean, we're not going to take any more action. All we need to do is adjourn, so if we, if we get one, I think we're, we're going to be okay. If we were taking action, yes, but.
Need to adjourn the meeting.
Yeah, that's what, that's what we were calling you for, is to adjourn the meeting.
Can you jump back on to a week and adjourn the meeting?
I mean, why did everybody get off?
The host closed the meeting.
The host closed the meeting.
First Tryon had the meeting. They were, they were running.
All right, we need Joe on the phone.
Um, if you can't do soon, but I guess. You can't zoom, they closed the meeting, the host closed it.
So, so I can add Bob on here too.
Yeah, you could just call Bob, just like that.
All right, Joe, you there?
Okay, well, I'm trying to get Bob on here.
We have everybody else on.
Waiting on Bob, just a second.
And then how do I?
And when he responds, you hit merge.
Merge calls.
We're working on now.
If he doesn't, it's just hang up, that's fine. Just hang up.
Hello, you reached the phone of Robert Marklees?
We've got enough to.
Okay, are you there? We tried to call Bob, but he's not answering his phone.
Bob not answering his one?
No.
No, no.
We have everybody but Bob, though, we can, we can still adjourn.
Yep, yep. Okay, so let's just, we'll just.
We can, I mean, we can just adjourn. Staff is aware of what needs to proceed moving forward in terms of adding things to the agenda, so we're, we're, we're good.
Okay, so I need to adjourn the meeting at 11, 12 a.m.
What's up, Mo?
All the favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, guys. Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
The meeting, and we'll see you guys, I guess, in the next, our next meeting for sure.
That'll work.
Okay, thank you.
Bye. Well, I like that tool.
It's a little, it's complicated, but once you start getting into learning it.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I don't know if I could actually operate, but I can certainly see, I understand what's being put out there on the screen, so that, that makes it really easy to go over things.
But in terms of, that's why I've kind of mentioned the whole, like, moving forward